Stream on YouTube, give me two seconds, we'll get started.
I keep looking up there right here so I can check it out.
All right, apologize about the delay, but we are live on YouTube and we are live on Zoom, so we can get started.
Okay, hereby call to order the March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Rockbridge County Planning Commission. Roll call, Commissioner Member Hennes, I'm here, Commissioner Member Kramer, Commissioner Member Sandridge, Commissioner Member Whitmore, Commissioner Member BB. In addition to citizens attending the meetings in person, citizens have several options to view or participate in the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. We'll do our best to take citizens' comment remotely, but there are two options for citizens to offer comment. One, to join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar, the link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. Two, to join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. You wish to make a citizen comment, as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. This time, we will proceed with the meeting and we will begin with citizen comments. Do we have anyone signed up to speak physically? Anybody in the room? Okay, do you have anybody that would like to make comments via Zoom or phone?
Anybody like to make a citizen comment, please utilize the raise the hand button now. Not seeing, we'll turn the floor back to the chair.
Okay, so everybody had a chance to review the meeting minutes from February fourteenth? Any changes or, okay, any motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. And all in favor? Okay, the motion passes, we are on to board reports, Mr. Slaton.
Yeah, usually, as reported last month, usually this just includes the Board of Supervisors and TCO Board of Zoning Appeals. We're gonna do that, starting from here on out, we're gonna do that, but also update y'all with the Community Development Committee and the Solar Committee all at the same time. So that's why we changed it to Board and Committee Updates. So it's fairly, fairly busy month for the Board of Supervisors with planning and zoning items. They met on February the twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, approved the conditional rezoning with Donald. That's, of course, Regina Donald in the Brownsburg area from the Residential Zoning District to the Agricultural Zoning District with acceptance of certain proffers. Ms. Donald did proffer essentially four things, that the property would not be utilized for cottage industry for drone repair, machinery repair, or equipment, or auto repair. Then second, it would not be used for auto salvage yard, junkyard, and would prohibit hogs on the property. So that was a proper voluntary proffer that Ms. Donald offered and the board accepted it. That, the second action item on that twenty sixth meeting was the Flint property and the Natural Bridge Station. They recommended approval of special exception permit to place the mobile home in a business zone as recommended by the Planning Commission. And last public hearing associated with planning and zoning was the Johansson Campground off of Brighton's Run Road. And that was approved with, as the Planning Commission recommended with conditions. Moving forward at the September last, I'm sorry, the March eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting, the board denied the volcano energy project. As you know, y'all had recommended denial back in October. Volcano Energy requested an affirmative of the application being placed on the Board of Supervisors Agenda. That, that agenda item was placed on March the eleventh, this past Monday. And in general, the, the board felt that the, the proposed site would have an adverse impact to the character of neighborhood and adverse impact on the abutting property. So that, that permit was, special exception permit was denied by the board. The second public hearing associated with planning and zoning, this past Monday, the eleventh, was the zoning text amendment for car washes pertaining to defining and providing for car washes in the business zone. That was approved as recommended by the board, or recommended by the Planning Commission. Moving sort of backwards, if you will, the Tourism Corridor Overlay, overlay Board met on Wednesday, the sixth, March sixth, to review proposed plans of a Wawa convenience store located on East Midland Trail, essentially in between the existing, what we call the Graziano Shopping Center and Goodwill, that would be located on, across the street from the existing quarry there. That, they postponed taking action on the plans for Wawa. Essentially, it's a site plan review, as you know, the Tourism Corridor Overlay reviews site plan review and building elevations. And so the site plan review is still being reviewed by the Public Service Authority for sewer and water connections and VDOT with some ingress egress. Well received, obviously, very positive conversation pertaining to that, but they did not take formal action on that. We anticipate them coming back through the process or back through the TCO Board in April at their earliest date. The section, the second action item for the TCO on the sixth was a Circle K, proposed Circle K, located at the former Aunt Sarah's Pancake House, more recently, Muce Alegre in the Timber Ridge area. That was approved by the TCO Board. And that's a Circle K convenience store with an unknown quick service restaurant associated with that, so that was approved. We do have an upcoming Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. It's for a front setback request, and the upcoming meeting will be on March twentieth, twenty twenty four, associated with the Sutherland property, Lot twenty one in Longview Meadows, off of Stewart'sburg Road, tax path number seventy six dash eighteen dash twenty one. And this is essentially the third variance request that we've had in this particular section of Longview Meadows. And, and what it is, is once you get to the end of the ridge, the lots really, they, they have a nice plateau, but they steeply or very quickly start going off on both sides of that plateau, if you will. And so we've done two fronts, two similar requests, variance requests, and they're both to reduce, the other two, I should say, are, were to reduce the front setback from sixty five foot front, always from the edge of the, of the road right of way. In this case, the edge of the road right of way, the property line are one and the same. Those previous two requests for the same exact reason, because once you get to sixty five foot, the physical constraints of going over that ledge puts the house site over the edge. So state law requires that we notify the Planning Commission of the variance request on the agenda item. That's the purpose of, of this particular update. The Planning Commission historically has not recommended one way or another, as far as approving or denying the variant request. If, if needed, we could certainly pull it up the screen, have more discussion, but we are required to inform you of that. So as far as the committees go, the Solar Committee, our next meeting is tomorrow night. It has, it has, in my opinion, it's progressed well. We're making progress on a solar ordinance, we hope to have that too. It would be a zoning text amendment, obviously, associated with the solar ordinance, we hope to have that to y'all in the upcoming months. Y'all being the Planning Commission for a public hearing, and then, of course, your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The Community Development Committee met on February twentieth, introduced Mr. Tom BB to the committee. We appreciate his, his attendance on the committee. And pretty much, we just reviewed planning commission items, upcoming board agenda items. And we also reviewed a smart scale application that we're preparing for. I don't think I've updated y'all on this, but it's sort of growing pains, good growing pains, if you will. You probably noticed some congestion in the Econo Lane, Greenhouse Road area. And so smart scale is a funding mechanism from VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation. That's a hundred percent, could be a hundred percent funding for VDOT to improve that intersection. So we've, we've worked with Timmons Group, the Timmons Group under the Central Shenandoah Planning District procurement process. So we were able, we were able to very quickly hire Timmons under that procurement. They have already put up the traffic cameras, and essentially, the reports that I'm getting is the traffic counts associated with the area warrant, uh, warrant a bona fide right turn lane coming out of the Econo Lane. It warrants a bona fide right turn lane into Econo Lane. That would be if you're traveling from Lexington to Econo Lane. And then extending the left turn lane coming from the interstate, there's already a bona fide left turn lane going into the property or into Econo Lane, I should say. But it's, the stacking could be increased. And so all of those, at minimum, we will be making an application for that smart scale application. The preliminary applications are due on April first, and so it's a fairly, fairly heavy work in progress. Also, I'm fairly confident that we're going to reapply for the pedestrian improvements. Ironically enough, we, we applied for those pedestrian improvements, the last smart scale funding, we were unsuccessful, so we're gonna try again. But those pedestrian improvements, as, as y'all saw, the pedestrian study would take the existing sidewalks from essentially the Tractor Supply College Square Shopping Center up into that intersection. And so fingers crossed, we're successful on those applications. The next meeting for the Office of Community Development Committee meeting will be Monday, the eighteenth, so we'll update you accordingly on that.
Did you have any update on the committee, Solar Committee or other?
That, that was included. The Solar Committee is meeting tomorrow, and that's the one that I'm hopeful that will do a zoning text amendment in the upcoming months to y'all. In my opinion, it's progressing well, it's a good group, a good working group. We, we've reviewed the draft ordinance that staff are prepared and we're, we're just adding to that, obviously.
I just want to also point out with TCO, one of the things that we wanted to see from Wawa is some rendering showing what is that gonna look like coming into town? Because that is kind of the first thing you see, the biggest thing, and we're like, wanna see, are you gonna see the top of the roof? Are you gonna see the air conditioning units? You know, we've talked about maybe some options for those roofs too, to hide, hide those. And that's something in the future, we're gonna start asking to see those, so we can see what it's gonna look like from the road.
Sure, to piggyback off that, the, the TCO always gets the, the traditional front elevation, side elevation, the rear elevations. And, and sometimes that works because you're at grade, like Circle K, for example, you're actually somewhat below grade, looking up to the building. So you can sort of improvise on that with a particular Wawa location. When you're coming into town, you do get a vantage point for, for sort of top down, which is, I will tell you, unusual. It just depends on what part of the corridor, which corridor you're in and what part of the corridor. So, so looking forward to continuing that discussion with Wawa.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, Sarah Losapia, is that right? Is that clear? Losapia, six four six Paget Hill Road, Natural Bridge, Virginia, two four five seven eight. Application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a commercial kennel, pet grooming, and the agricultural and general uses A two zoning district.
Yes.
And applicant presentations.
Um, Ms. Sarah Losapia is in attendance, along with her father, David Losapia, representing the project. Sarah has made an application to, an application for a special exception permit to develop and operate a commercial kennel. The property is owned by David and Carol Losapia, and is located on the west side of Paget Hill Road, further identified as six ninety. And the property is in an agricultural zoning district. And so the property consists of fifty five point two eight acres. It's outlined in magenta here on the screen, and as you can see, the driveway is directly off Paget Hill Road. It goes to an existing single family dwelling identified as six forty six Paget Hill Road. The property is located in and surrounded by the agricultural zoning district. So that's all the white on the map, and I'll probably have to zoom out fairly far to see any different colors. You have the business zoning associated with the interstate interchange there. To zoom back in to Paget Hill Road, again, it's in, the Losapia property is in and surrounded in an agricultural zoning district. Per Section three oh two point one one six of the regulations, a kennel is defined as any location where raising, grooming, caring for, or boarding of dogs, cats, and other small animals, or other small animals for commercial purposes is carried on. Again, the tax, the property is further identified as tax map number ninety five dash fourteen dash C and consists of fifty five point two eight acres. The property is located in the Buffalo Magisterial District. I was having some computer issues last week, and I apologize on number three and the draft conditions that could be utilized for this. I, I had a change there that made those blank on number three, that took out the three number. And then also in number four, I, I meant to put, shall be limited to blank through blank, and those would be days of the week. And then from, you know, blank AM to blank PM. And so you will notice on your draft motions, those, those, those do not have those proposed, if you will, numbers of dogs, cats, nor the numbers of hours of operation, nor days of the week. That, that can be discussed, of course, that these are conditions that have been utilized in the past. As you know, the conditions are unique to the property and they can be modified accordingly. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor to Sarah Losapia to review the application. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Losapia, I'm a licensed veterinary technician of twelve years, and I'm a single mom of three boys. So I'm hoping to kind of transition my employment to do something that can be a little more flexible. My hope is to operate a grooming facility in our home. I think I've provided you all with pictures and kind of a summary of everything. I have spoken to several adjoining neighbors and no one has had any major concerns. I know that most of the neighbors I talked to were excited to have a groomer close by for their dogs too. So my hope is to do more of like a one-on-one grooming, not like a big commercial grooming. I would be the only one, you know, doing all the work, bathing, brushing, grooming, all of that. And I would be able to talk to each client individually before they, you know, come to the property to make sure that they know exactly where to come to. There would be no, you know, miscommunication on what driveway to come to, because the driveway at the bottom of Paget Hill, we're pretty close to our neighbor. So I want to make sure that that's clear for anybody who's coming up our driveway. And I guess I'd like to say that I'd like to only have up to two client dogs at my house, at the facility, at one time. So it's not like there's gonna be, you know, a bunch of people dropping off and then a bunch of people picking up. It would just be, you know, one, one client at a time. And then I know that the permit has to be, the special exception permit is labeled as a kennel, but I do not plan to have any overnight boarding. I don't plan to offer any, anything like that, just specific to grooming, is my hope.
So are you, the proposed proffers, is this Monday through Saturday, nine to five, is that what you're looking at?
My hope is actually to do like three days a week, not a full-time kind of thing. I guess I'd like to leave the days of the week open, so I could be kind of flexible with, you know, clients, so if someone needed, you know, a Saturday appointment, I could offer that. But I think, you know, I don't plan to.
Also, you mentioned two dogs at a time, but like I have three labs, you know, if I came and I brought all my dog, you know, I might wanna have three.
I guess, yeah, if someone, if like one family had that many animals, I would like to be able to offer to do them all at once, so there's not too much back and forth for them.
I just don't wanna, you know, make such constraints that it's gonna be difficult and you'll be out of compliance within a month.
Three?
Three, yes. Do you have any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. You know, since it's just grooming, I would think that you'd do Monday through Saturday.
Yeah.
And then reasonable hours, is it nine to five or eight thirty to five thirty?
Five, I think is totally fine. I would plan actually to be done by like two or two thirty on the weekdays.
Don't want to hamstring yourself if you end up there.
I was thinking about people that work till five, that can't come get their dog till five thirty or something like that. I'm just thinking, we might need to extend it a little bit, just, you know.
Give her the leeway.
Right.
Even to six, it's like you said.
Yeah, just in case, I mean, I just think.
Be helpful, yeah, to me.
Just thinking ahead, you know, for you. That's what I would, I would say nine to six, or maybe we need to say eight thirty, because again, people might drop their animals off before they go to work and may pick them up after. So we'll, we'll do that. Any other questions or comments?
I'd, I'd say make it four, I mean, just, just so you don't have to come back again. I mean, if you wanna play by the rules and all of a sudden, you're like, oh, you know, it'd be nice to have four on site at one time if the business grows. And I don't see any harm in doing four versus.
I don't either. Have you thought about doing like signage? You said you're close to the other driveway or?
At the bottom of our driveway, we have like a place for a sign. We've never had a sign there, but I guess if I'm gonna, I, I would like to do a sign, you know, down in that spot, but nothing like large or obnoxious, that's gonna be.
Basically, just something that says groomer, that way.
This way.
Sure.
Yeah, I saw the photo of your salon, you don't need to pay for it, so let's make it four. Looks very nice.
That's right. Very good. Okay. All right, thank you very much. If we have other questions, we'll let you know. Okay, do you have anything else?
Prior to open the public hearing, just one clarification, these are conditions associated with the special exception permit. Of course, as you know, they run with the land. They do, they do not have to be, unlike proffers, they do not have to be agreed upon, but they obviously have to be sound, reasonable, associated with the use of the land. Ironically enough, we, I, I've had some signage discussions. We don't have any, while we do have signage regulations for, for individual businesses, you know, obviously, individual businesses in a business zone. We have some unique regulations pertaining to cottage industry, it's, it's twelve square feet for a cottage industry. And, and I think that's the same as a campground. But in the future, I would like to talk about, about a zoning text amendment to better define what a lot of, what's allowed for commercial kennels. So that could be part of the discussion here. Of course, it has to be located out of the VDOT right of way, five feet off the property line and located off the, off the VDOT right of way. So do want to make sure we know that.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had to add.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Oh, hearing, I was gonna ask Chris, is this property around the corner from the kennel that we?
It is approximately, I think, a quarter mile, half a, two, it's approximately a half mile back towards, if you'd like me to share my screen, I can give you a better idea. The existing, one of the kennels, well, the kennels on Paget Hill Road that have been most recently approved.
It's the one that's laid down and almost wraps around.
That was these two properties here. You see that, that was the Warner application, that is, are, are these two properties were owned by Patrick and Tara Warner. So as far as distance, I believe it's a, you know, quarter mile, half mile down there, on the same side of the road, to be clear. But, but further back towards Lexington.
Right. Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing, is there anyone physically present who would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, we have Ms. Ann Russick signed up.
Good evening, my name is Ann Russick, I'm from the Buffalo District. I'm here tonight, not so much because I have a problem with Sarah doing a grooming business, but because of what happened with the property you were just talking about, I do have my own reservations about kennel licenses, as the Warners actually were operating a kennel before they ever came before this board to get a special exception. And that has definitely made me jaded towards these kind of licenses. Grooming, I have no problem with, but I would like to say that it is extremely important to me, as the neighbor closest to them on the west, and I am the neighbor that shares that driveway, which I'd like to get to in a minute. So I would specifically like to know that this special exception is in writing and has no boarding, no breeding, no training. I don't, this, um, this special exception will stay with that property long after Sarah, you know, moves on or whatever else, or her parents or anything like that. And I want to make sure that I can do everything I can as that property owner closest to them to ensure that all I ever have to worry about is a boarding business. I'm kind of treating this like as if she was one of my neighbors who wanted to operate a hair salon out of her business, you know? And that's what I would want to see or be ensured that it's being limited to, especially for any future owners and any sales promotions that somebody, it would ever be the property was for sale. Oh, and by the way, you can operate a kennel here, because we already have that variance. As far as the driveway goes, I think you need to talk about that just a little bit, because it's not close. You could almost call it shared. And I don't have a picture with me, but the previous owners of that property, what we did was, we, actually, Tom knows, because, Mr. BB, because he built the property. And so what we did was, the driveway, um, it's, it looks like one driveway, except that the Campbells who lived there before, we shared the expense of putting in a landscaping, I guess you'd call it like a peninsula, which clearly does divide the two driveways, but you have to go either side of that landscaping peninsula. And as I said, that's a land, so I also think you'd have to talk about, when you're talking about property lines, where I think Sarah's talking about putting that sign could actually be on my part of that landscaping island. And the other thing we just have to work out is, I know that Sarah would, of course, tell people as they're coming down Paget Hill, you want to go to the driveway to the left, that's my driveway. But it's a tricky call, because when you come down that driveway, mine driveway is much more inviting, just because of the angle of the turn. And I understand that that could happen occasionally, but I will tell you that if it happened frequently, it would be problematic for me, as we have horses and I have dogs that are allowed to run loose when we're out on the property, which we are a lot. And if somebody comes down my driveway with dogs in their car, I can assure you, my dogs are going to jump on that car, and the person is going to then come down the driveway. I have a, an island, as you get down by my property, it's very conducive for dropping off horses and things. So basically, you're gonna come down my driveway, and then you're just gonna feel like, oh, going around that island, which is gonna bring you closer to my building, which is gonna bring you. And so I'm not saying anybody's gonna get hurt, but my dogs are gonna jump on that car, because they're gonna see other dogs in that car. I just want to make sure that I don't have any liability for that, for somebody making a mistake coming down my driveway. My dogs jumping on their car, and then them saying, your dog scratched my car. So I think that you will have to talk with Sarah more with where she's gonna put that sign. And, and for sure, which she's already alluded to, that she would do, to really make people understand, because they are, it's, you know, it's just the way, the configuration.
Appreciate it, thank you for coming. Hey, do we have anybody else present?
No one's signed up at this time, but we'll recognize anyone at this time. There's no one signed up at this time, we'll recognize anyone that'd like to, they commented now.
Okay.
Not seeing any, if you'd like to make a comment on this application, please utilize in your own line, please utilize the raise hand button now. Not seeing anyone, I will turn the floor back over to the chair.
Okay.
And with that, Ms. Losapia does have a picture of the, of the entrances.
Would you like to respond on what you were thinking as far as a sign? So she can't?
No, you can, but we do need to remember to close the public.
I will, I just wanted her to answer that before we keep moving on.
So just to kind of explain the picture that you're looking at, so our driveway is off, obviously, the one on the left, and Ms. Russick's is one on the right. The sign, the place that I'm talking about, that there is for a sign, is actually to the left of our driveway, so it's not on the kind of island.
On the peninsula.
Between the two. But I'd be happy to, you know, talk with Ms. Russick or whoever we need to, to make sure that it's clear, you know, we can put signage up that is clear, that.
Great, thank you so much.
And that, and I can pull it up online, back on the GIS if needed. Per the current, current sign ordinance, it states, all signs shall be subject to a setback requirement at least fifteen feet from the paved surface of the fronting highway or roadway, unless otherwise regulated by state and federal regulations. And what that pretty much means is it has to be out of the VDOT right of way. I could assume that Paget Hill is a thirty foot prescriptive easement, might be forty feet. You know, that'd be a twenty foot on the La, La Sapiro, Rustic side, and then twenty feet. If it is indeed a forty foot right of way, that's twenty, twenty feet on each side of the road. So I'm confident the fence is outside of the VDOT right of way. It also says, and five feet from adjoining property line. So those, those regulations are, are on the books now, that does not have to be incorporated in the conditions. It may be a good idea to say signage is limited to X number of square feet.
Okay, so we don't have anybody else here to speak and no one online to speak?
That's correct.
Okay, so at this time, we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the board here with questions and comments.
And it, it may be beneficial, if you, if you don't mind, I'll read the proposed conditions.
We're getting ready, I mean, we read them once, didn't we, when we read?
I don't think we, we did not read them, we talked about the changes, well, we talked about changes number three and four, but if y'all want to include those in your, in a, in a motion, if y'all willing, that would be appropriate time.
Okay. Do you have a recommendation for the signage, signing is limited to fifteen square feet or twelve square, you know, what's the?
Well, obviously, a twelve square foot would be a, you know, three by four, so that's, that's a larger, that, that is what we have used for cottage industries at this time. Not sure that, that size sign would be needed in this particular case to identify which entrance to use.
Could we just say no larger than twelve square feet?
It's y'all's, it's obviously y'all's purview, if you will, but, but certainly, I, I would not anticipate any, anywhere, a need for a twelve foot sign, or certainly not exceeding twelve. A three by four, a three foot by four foot sign.
Right. Okay, we could do two by three, I mean, that's six.
Yeah, Ann probably doesn't want a four square foot sign.
It is a double judge, or yes, sir.
Right.
And she probably doesn't want twelve square foot signs.
Okay, so any other questions, comments here? It looks like it's pretty straightforward to me, and I think these are reasonable conditions. Okay. Do we need a motion?
I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the special exception permit to Sarah Losapia to develop and operate a kennel, pet grooming business, in the agriculture and general uses A dash two zoning district per LDR six oh three point zero three dash five on fifty five point two acres on the west side of Paget Hill Road, identified as tax map number ninety five dash fourteen dash C be approved with the following. with the following conditions. Number one, the business shall be limited to grooming dogs and or cats. No overnight boarding, breeding or training permitted. No more than a total of four dogs or cats allowed on the property at one time for grooming. Hours of operation for grooming services shall be limited Monday through Saturday from 8:30 a.m. through 6 p.m. Approval contingent. Oh, I guess we would have new five would be the signage. Number five, signage is limited to more than four by three square feet equal to 12 square feet. Number six would be approval contingent on a county building department, Virginia Department of Transportation, let's be done, and Health Department approvals.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
And to be clear, prior to the vote, we are going with a 12 foot sign. There was some discussion of limit to a three, a six square foot. We don't need to give the dimensions, just the total dimensions or our total square footage, I should say.
Are you guys okay with that 12 square feet? I mean, no more than that. It's obviously not going to be bigger than that.
Rather have a two by three sign.
Six square feet? Okay, they want to go with six square feet. So we're going to amend that to signage is limited to six square feet.
That's, yes.
Okay, and we have a second by Mr. Beebe. All in favor? Hi, any opposed? No, we'll recommend approval.
Appreciate it. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you for coming out. Thank you, Ms. Russick, for coming out. Okay, next on the agenda, Michael W. Godfrey and Lori and sorry, Anne Lampert.
Prior to, prior to the meeting, I've worked with them for a month now plus, and I asked that prior to the meeting.
926 Maury River Road, Lexington, Virginia, 24450. Application for conditional zoning map amendment from the General Residential R1 zoning district to agricultural transition AT zoning district with acceptance of potential proppers. We are ready for presentation.
Yeah, if you did bear with me, I'm gonna get everyone oriented and turn the floor over to the applicants. All right, Michael W. Godfrey and Lori Anne Lampert at 926 Maury River Road, Lexington, Virginia, 24450, has made an application for a conditional zoning map amendment. The application is rezoned two parcels of land from the General Residential Zoning District to the Agricultural Zoning, I'm sorry, Agricultural Transitional Zoning District with acceptance of potential proppers. I will say, you know, in conversations with the landowner, you know, this obviously come up very recently with the Donald application. So it's my understanding in order for the Board of Supervisors to accept the the potential proppers, we have to advertise it as a conditional rezoning with acceptance of proppers. There have been no proppers really, really discussed nor 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 given to date. The properties are owned by the landowners and are located on the east side of Maury River Road, approximately 1.15 miles north of the intersection of Maury River Road, of course, further identifies Route 39 and Alphen Lane, Alphen Lane is further identified as 750. The property is further identified as, or excuse me, the properties are identified as tax map number 61 dash 2 dash 1 E1. That consists of 5.6 acres and then 61 to 1 E2 consisting of 6.123 acres per tax records. Like to just pause real quick and explain that. The the owners also own 926, own and reside at 926 Maury River Road. Looking at the zoning of the area. The the Virginia Horse Center property is located to the west of the property. The two two parcels under consideration are highlighted in magenta here. Of course, in the yellow, we have the residential zoning district. In the light pink, if you will, we have the agricultural transitional zoning district. And then we have the blue, the purple rather, which is the business, uh, planned business zoning district. It's very little bit of planned zoning business district in Rockridge County. In fact, it's this stretch of Maury River Road. Mostly on the, it would be the east side of Maury River Road. And then there's one other property on along North Lee Highway that's actually zone B2. With that being said, again, they they own and reside at 926. That property consists of 1.35 acres, but that is not part of the application. That the the purpose of the rezoning, well, I won't get into terribly much with it. As far as the purpose of the rezoning, I would like to say the properties are in the Walker's Creek Magisterial District. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Ms. Lampert and go from there.
So I'm Lori. Nice to see you all. Thank you for taking a look at our application. We bought this property approximately two years ago, I guess, in anticipation of my retirement from the Air Force. And my husband is from over in the Iron Gate area, so he wanted to come back home. He found me the one farm that is situated right next to the horse center. I'm an eventer. I have evented at the horse center in the past. Loved it. It was the one farm that really was going to get me here and not Aiken or Ocala, which are two other big horse locations. My one condition for it was that I get to build a bigger barn than what was on it. There's a four stall barn. I have eight horses. I do a little bit of breeding of Trichaner horses, which is a German warmblood. I do it for myself mainly. I sell the boys and I keep the girls because I like to event the girls. So basically, we went to, we we moved in the summer. I retired in December and we worked with DeWitt Fix to come up with a plan for the bigger barn and which is just eight stalls, polling stalls, so that I can safely deliver polls. And then ran into, you know, and and I actually came into the building department, I think, back in August or so and said, hey, this is what I'm planning on doing. What do I need to do permit wise, all of that stuff? And they're like, and to be honest, I don't know that we ever actually talked about what zone we were in. I didn't even really think about it because I was going based upon the deed, which has agricultural and residential. So I just, I didn't give it any thought and apparently they didn't either. And they just said that I needed a farm exemption and that I would need trade permits to put in the electrical. And so we thought everything was good. We had everything all lined up until DeWitt came in to, I think, do the trade permit. And then they were like, well, you can't build a barn there. It's residential. But the two parcels are limited by deed to one build like one house on each of the properties. So it's really not ever going to be a developed area. So it's, I mean, to me, it's a fairly cut and dry. We just need to be able to build a barn. That's about it.
Okay.
Summarize it?
Sounds good. If you have any questions for the applicant. First of all, thank you for your service. We are always happy to have our service members retiring back to the area. So thank you for that. We will now open up the public hearing. Do we have anyone physically here to speak?
But there's other than applicants, there's there are no other person that signed up to speak.
Okay, do we have anybody on Zoom or on the telephone?
Uh, if anyone would like to speak on this application via Zoom, please raise your hand now. Not hearing any or not seeing any, I should say, we'll turn the floor back over to the chair.
Okay. No one else is here to speak, we will close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and questions. And this is a pretty cut and dried thing to me. I don't see any issues with us.
And to follow up on the landowner's presentation, we did, we did apologize. They of course did the right thing. They came in, you know, months ago and asked the building department. I since have had a conversation with the building official, essentially improved communication, you know, we, the building permit, the building permit process or or the farm exempt process, we catch those type things, obviously. This is the very first, I mean, we, the zoning department would be looking at setbacks away from property lines and what zoning district it's in. And so with that being said, I have had a follow up conversation essentially for for us, this this administration ability to to ask the right questions to to make sure that this this could have been done six months ago and we've been in a barn by now potentially. And so with that being said, I do apologize to landlords on the county behalf on that miscommunication on our end.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. Anything here? Okay. Let's, I guess we're ready for a motion. Going to this side, this side did their job.
All right. I make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors a three zoning of 11.732 acres located on the east side of Maury River Road identified as tax map number 61 dash 2 dash 1 E1 and number 61 dash 2 dash 1 E2 from the General Residential R2 zoning district to the agricultural transitional A2 zoning district be approved.
And that's General Residential R1 zoning district.
R1, I see.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Couple of seconds and all in favor?
Hi. Thank you.
That will be recommended for approval. Thank you again. Appreciate that. Okay, we are on to item number seven, zoning text amendment discussion. Can you discuss revisions to the definition of restaurants, providing for restaurants associated with a country general store?
Yeah, Mr. Meek is going to do a brief presentation on this. Of course, at last month's meeting, we provided you several definitions pertaining to restaurants. Obviously, the somewhat crux of this conversation came from a particular landowner that would like the flexibility open. They are proposing a country store. They would like the flexibility or the the essentially flexibility or approval to be allowed to make a special exception for a country store to include a restaurant. Currently, we have a provision for country store as a use by special exception and at least the agricultural and general use district, but that does not extend to a restaurant. And so that's really the the beginning of the conversation. Backing up a little bit, we we had the conversation of how we certainly, how we currently treat food trucks as a restaurant, which which could use clarity. And so really, we could do it twofold. One, we can just planning commission construct instruct staff to go ahead and proceed a zoning text amendment to allow restaurants as part of a country store. Of course, both of them would be a use by special exception or a country store, I should say, would be a use by special exception. We could proceed with that, you know, as soon as y'all would like and then come back to the restaurant definition at a later date. It has not been, it has not been terribly problematic to date as far as how we how we handle food trucks. But with that being said, Mr. Meek does have a brief PowerPoint presentation on on his findings. I would also like to come on up, Mr. Meek. I would also like to reluctantly report that this will be Mr. Meek's last presentation with the with to the Board of Supervisors. He has accepted the job as a transportation planner in the Nashville area, so we will certainly miss him. But without further ado, I will start the presentation.
There you go. All right. It is pretty brief, honestly. Not much to it. They're pretty cut and dry. Most counties kind of group food trucks into the restaurant definition, but some, very few separate it. Two of the definitions I did find named as a mobile food vending vehicle. It's a self-propelled propelled or towed vehicle licensed by DMV containing a mobile kitchen or a mobile food unit, which is a restaurant mounted on wheels and readily movable from place to place. If you're still a first time. Or are you? I'm not. Okay, sorry. There you go. It worked when I moved back. They they don't really mention them as as food trucks, more mobile food vending vehicles or mobile restaurants. But for restaurants, our definition is a little ambiguous. Any building in which for compensation, food or beverages are dispensed to persons not residing on the premises for consumption. And it's doesn't really include a lot of places and it could be interpreted a couple of ways. So a lot of other counties base their definition off of the Code of Virginia because they have a base definition. And I kind of dumbed it down. There are four points. Just any place where food is prepared for service to the public on or off the premises, which is what ours was based off of. Then two, any place that prepares or stores food for distribution to persons of the same business operation. Three would be the food trucks, mobile points of service to which food is distributed by a place or operation described in the second point. And then four is any place or operation that prepares or stores food for distribution to child or adult daycare centers or schools. And restaurant doesn't apply to manufacturing like an industrial zone. Manufacturer would have, like a grocery store. And then just some examples I saw that had really fleshed out definitions that kind of followed the Code of Virginia. Southampton had pretty much just any place where food is served to the public. And that includes delicatessens and convenience stores and any place that prepares or stores food for distributions to persons of the same business. And then Albemarle County has any place where food is prepared for service to public similar to ours or just generally any place that is served to the public.
So again, we have a couple of options moving forward. I certainly don't don't think that we're holding up any processes, but you know, it could be beneficial to, you know, to go ahead and do the zoning text amendment to pertaining to country general stores, add the restaurant definition while utilizing our current definition. Or and then come back to the the overall definition of restaurants at a later date. That's completely up to y'all. I do think it would be beneficial to to have a an improved definition of restaurant.
That definition needs some improvement. That's not, it's not good.
Any question? Do you know if there's a crosswalk between when someone tries to get a business license for a food truck, a restaurant, a deli or whatever, a place that serves food and health department inspection? What is that? Is there a tie?
There, there is not a direct tie that now, you know, there is a tie with the zoning department, you know, as you know, it's approximately 2013. The Code of Virginia, prior to that time, the Code of Virginia was amended that allows zoning to be part of the the business license process. So we do get that upfront discussion with either a restaurant or food truck or whatever it is. How we handle food trucks currently is they can go into an existing business zone, obviously with landowner's permission or be associated with a special event or a farm brewery, a winery, those type of activities. But as far there, there are two separate processes, you know, we, I do not believe we have the authority to hold up the business license or the zoning approval based on the Health Department approval. But I will say, obviously, food trucks or food truck restaurants and and food trucks both have a Health Department inspection that they're required to do before operating. And we do mention that, you know, we say, hey, have you done your Health Department? And it's suggested that they do it prior to the bill, the business license, but it's not a requirement for the process, I should say. It's certainly required for the use.
So when we have, you know, that is a proffer that they're going to have V dot approval and whatever. I mean, it seems like that would just be one more thing to say that you have to have Health Department approval or whatever for.
Well, so that's a special exception. We're not, when we're dealing with it, like we have had many businesses. In fact, I don't think this LaSappio came for a business license. She very well may have. That would be where we raise our hand and say, hey, we don't have the authority to sign off on the on the business license prior to the special exception. But unlike special exceptions, staff does not have the ability to set conditions associated with essentially what we're talking about a by right use of the property.
My only concern about doing a text amendment now and not having a definition for a restaurant is it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. We need to understand what a restaurant is before we say it's okay. You know, or before we do a zoning text amendment, I would think. That's just my gut, you know, because that that's very murky what we have right now for a restaurant. That's just my two cents.
So the one of the things, I mean, we could, I'm gonna share my screen again. We could try to tackle this this evening. Bear with me, I'm gonna share my screen because I didn't, I didn't object to really any of the the definitions that we that Mr. Meek had researched. Bear with me here, I'm gonna share my screen.
To me, like a restaurant, we're talking about like a a gas station that serves food. I don't consider that a restaurant. Now, if the restaurant has seating, let's say like a, you know, like a country store, you know, that they have gas pumps outside, but they have, you know, serve food inside and they have tables where you can sit down. Is that a restaurant? It's closer than just going to get a hot dog and going out to your car, you know, just, I don't think just because you serve food to the public that you're a restaurant.
That's correct, because it would be, you know, not residing on the premise and for consumption on the premises. So and we've talked about this in the past, as far as one example of a country store that that has food service. So, and we've talked about this in the past, as far as, uh, one example of a country store that, that has food services, which I would not, as zoning administrator, would not interpret as a, as a restaurant, is Lane's Country Store, of course, you know, world around ham sandwiches, if you will. Uh, get them every time I go by. With that being said, you pick them up and you go out. I've, I've eaten them in the parking lot.
You have picnic tables there and we've sat at a picnic table and I'm like, okay, well, that doesn't necessarily make it a restaurant. It's just on the side of the road, you know?
Sure, but the, the not residing on the premise for consumption on the premise. So then the definition of premise would be, you know, would that include the, the, the parcel of land outside?
Boy, those picnic tables look pretty close to the porch.
Yeah.
So we could continue working on it, um, and, and bring back a, essentially, I, I'm confident we could bring back a, a strong definition for a restaurant. And would y'all prefer, let, let's, I, I would go to the, I would, um, request that we would separate the two uses out. Uh, have a restaurant definition and have a mo- mobile food truck definition.
Food truck is not a restaurant. Those are two totally different animals, in my opinion, but, um, that's, that's just my thinking. I'm one person out of five, so you guys speak up.
No, I agree 100%. I think the food trucks, uh, in some counties are a huge problem because of how, how long they're located in a place. And there's, are states that don't put a huge, uh, personal property tax on vehicles?
Right.
That sort of equalizes it, I think.
I mean, I just, I'd like to see what y'all can come up with for a more concise, clear definition for a restaurant before we do a zoning text amendment, talking about something that is very ambiguous right now, in my opinion.
Chris, you said we're not holding that guy. I don't believe we are. I mean, with that being said, you know, with, with his particular plans, with their particular plans, I should say, it, it, it fits well with the restaurant, the current restaurant definition we're, we have. Because obviously their plans don't include a food counter. It, it's a bona fide restaurant where you would consume it. The, the, the current restaurant definition would work with a country store as planned, uh, on this particular property. Uh, but, but no, I, I don't believe we are, um, you know, as, if, if I can report, I guess going back is, are, are we, do we have any concerns on that part of the text amendment a- as far as incorporating a restaurant as, as we're all familiar with, with a country store? That, that would be my, my question for the consensus.
No, I mean.
So, so I could, I could certainly report that, you know, that, that we are not, and, and of course, we're in constant communication with the supervisors as well. Uh, so I can report that back to the, the landowner that say, hey, the, the, the real purpose of the delay, if you will, is to have a better understanding of restaurant slash food truck and, and that the consensus of the planning commission is that they are amenable to go through the public process, obviously, of, of amending the country store definition to include a restaurant such as a restaurant as defined as we currently have it, I'd say.
Yeah, I mean, I think of a country store as having food and serving it and having tables and stuff, so it is, I love them. Okay, um, so you all know what to come back to us with your restaurant.
Whether we can do it or not, we'll, we'll see.
Okay, girl, thank you.
Hence the next agenda item.
Yes, comprehensive plan discussion, land use chapter, and setting dates for community meetings.
Yeah, I pretty much have the same update as last time. I apologize. We really have not had, had much headway. I have worked with, uh, the GIS mapping department on some different ideas on, on the comprehensive plan. Uh, you know, obviously, a lot has changed since the last, uh, land use plan, including the designation of the Natural Bridge State Park. Uh, that's currently in, you know, some of it's in a rural area, some of it's in a rural village area probably. Uh, but with the ownership and into a state park, that dramatically changes the land use as, as it pertains to local regulation. Um, we've looked at the Fancy Hill area. There, in my opinion, there's some inappropriate zoning in the Fancy Hill area. Uh, a business zone, I should say, where farmland is, along Tinkerville Road, not conducive to business zone whatsoever. Some of the hotels are in the agricultural zone, et cetera. So we've looked at different pockets. Since last meeting, we've looked at different pockets of, of potential mapping for the comprehensive plan, but we have not had an opportunity to set dates. But, but I do, uh, we, we will do the best we can, uh, on setting those dates and, and further plugging away on the land use chapter.
Um, I would, I just had a thought, um, you know, community table has that traveling community table and it goes out. I think that would be a great opportunity to be able to get out and talk to people out in the community too, in the various ones. Apparently, they have people come in, like the dentist from the health center or different people, you know, come and talk to the people, but it just, it may be kind of an, an opportunity to be out in all these different areas to, to work that out on a Wednesday night or something. But that's just a thought that I was thinking, because you already got a group of people there having dinner, you know, to go around and talk to them about what do you think? And, you know, what do you want to see in your community?
Absolutely. It's a great, great suggestion, as always, you know, in addition to that, we would, I, I think we would hold bona fide community meetings with the land use chapter. Usually they're in, you know, uh, fire departments, you know, different community, in some cases churches, different community anchors in the area.
Well, and that's kind of what they, you know, they'll have it at the Palmer Center, they'll have it at the Cars Creek Fire Department, you know, they, so they're going out into the community. So I just, I thought that might be kind of a ready-made. Um, it is the community table, the Wednesday night travel. I can't remember what they call that. Michelle Watkins is in charge of it now, but just let me know and I'm happy to connect you.
Okay, and who was that again?
Michelle Watkins is in charge of that.
Great, thank you.
She also runs the RATS program, Ocreteria Transportation. Okay, um, do we have any further business or anything else to discuss? I need a motion to.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. And a second from Mr. Beebe. All in favor?